All right, we're going to call the meeting to order for Monday, October 23rd. Here in council chambers, welcome everyone to our regular council meeting. I'll ask everyone to rise if you're able for the singing of O Canada. All right, thank you, everyone. So, over to you, CAO, for the roll call of councillors, please.
Thank you, Madam Morton. District one, councillor Shaun Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. District two, councillor Michael Digdon.
Present.
Thank you. District three, councillor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. District four, Warden of Man, Demong Berka.
Present.
Thank you. And District five, Deputy Warden Brent Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. The roll has been called. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Troy. All right, we'll move right into our agenda then. We have several items to add. The first is a previously added item regarding the service exchange, the SERMGAR legislation, and Bill 340. So, that information was provided to you in advance and as part of the information package. We'd also like to note that along with that is some correspondence received from Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Office of the Minister, John Lorr, regarding the bill has also been included as backup information. And then, in addition, we would like to add an in-camera session. We're adding the in-camera as an agenda item number five before reviewing the minutes. And the in-camera is to cover two topics: contract negotiations and personnel. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay. So, there being none, could I have a motion to approve it as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Digdon. Could I have a second? I'll second that. Thank you, councillor. Motion is carried. Okay, so the next item then is, per the amended amendment, is to move in camera. Could I have a motion to move us in camera, please?
Just before we go, I became aware since the last meeting, I'll have a conflict to do with the contract negotiations as per business dealings, so I'll excuse myself for that part of the in-camera.
Great. Thank you, councillor Sampson. Sorry, who's seconding it? Councillor Shaun Sampson? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, the motion is carried. So, we'll ask our members of the gallery to please step out for a few minutes. We'll be as quick as possible. Thank you very much. Sorry about that, folks. Okay, thank you. We've returned back to public session, and we're going to move on with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is the review of the minutes from the public hearing of September 25th, and those were circulated in advance. Is there a motion to approve if there are no errors or omissions?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the public hearing.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Digdon. Any further discussion on the public hearing minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, the next item is the regular council minutes of September 25th. If there are no errors or omissions, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Shaun Sampson. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Digdon. Any further discussion on the public hearing minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, the next item is the regular council minutes of September 25th. If there are no errors or omissions, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Shaun Sampson. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, so there being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item is regarding the election of the deputy warden. So, obviously, the deputy warden position comes up for reelection annually, so we've got this as an item of new business. I'm going to, at this time, call for nominations for the position of deputy warden for the municipality of the County of Richmond.
I'll nominate councillor Shaun Sampson for the position of deputy warden.
I would second that nomination.
Thank you, Deputy Warden and councillor Melanie Sampson. Councillor Shaun Sampson, do you accept the nomination for the role of deputy warden?
Yes, I do accept, yeah.
Okay, are there any further nominations? All right, if there are no further nominations, it has been moved by Deputy Warden Brent Sampson and seconded by councillor Melanie Sampson that councillor Shaun Sampson be elected as deputy warden. Could I have a motion to cease the nominations at this time?
I'll make that motion to cease nominations.
Thank you, councillor Mike Digdon. Can I second on that? I'll second that. Okay, thank you. Councillor Melanie Sampson has seconded the motion to cease nominations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So, there being no other nominations, Deputy Warden Shaun Sampson, congratulations on your election. All right, and thank you for your services, Deputy Warden. Councillor Brent Sampson, it was much appreciated. I know I needed the backup on a number of occasions, and you've provided some great leadership there, so. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is question period. And our question period at the front end of our regular council meeting is restricted to items on the committee reports. The committee reports being bylaw and policy, as well as committee of the whole. The phone-in number is 902-226-9885. That's 902-226-9885. And we'll have a maximum of 10 minutes for this question period. If there are any questions regarding the committee reports. We'll just give it a minute. I know, there's a little bit of a delay. I think about 30 seconds now with the new system, or something like that. Okay. All right. It seems like the longest 30 seconds ever, though, doesn't it? All right, well, I'm not hearing the phone ringing, and I don't see any questions coming from the floor regarding our committee reports, so we will move right along and move into committee reports. So, I believe Deputy Warden Sampson is going to read our committee of the whole report.
Committee of the whole report for October 2023. The committee met on October 10th of 2023. The committee discussed the acting collectively project. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to have council provide the acting collectively project team direction on what the best options are for presenting the Richmond County project findings.
Okay, so we have a motion. Sorry, I'm still working on my microphone here. Could I have a second on that motion, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Digdon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion is carried.
Prior to the next item, I'll just declare my conflict again, because we're back to the same thing.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Over to you, Deputy Warden.
The committee discussed the Zone 3 curbside collection tender. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to authorize staff to proceed with the award of the Zone 3 curbside tender with the amendment that we authorize staff to exceed budget in order to award the tender in question.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Warden. So, the motion has been made and amended with a friendly amendment. Could I have a second on that item?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Morton, I'd just like to, just for future, I guess, projects or RFTs that go out, maybe we can refer to our bylaw and policy committee to just double-check with.
Sure. Would you like to make a motion to that effect, councillor?
I would, yes, please.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, that's great. Okay, so, any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. The motion is carried. Back to you, Deputy Warden.
The committee discussed the new rules for off-highway vehicles. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to have staff begin looking into next steps for the municipality to develop a plan of action and further move that staff reach out to the ATV Association of Nova Scotia and place the new rules for off-highway vehicles on the agenda for discussion at the next police advisory board meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the invitation for Bell Canada to appear before council. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to have staff invite the Bell Alliance representative to appear before council at a future date to discuss the lack of coverage throughout many areas of the county.
I'll second that motion as well.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board order. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to have the warden draft a press release regarding the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board order confirming the number of councillors and polling districts.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sampson and Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed the wastewater management district funds. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to have staff explore feasibility and sustainability of pursuing the wastewater management district fund program and report back to council.
Could I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Digdon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the deer population in Richmond County. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to have staff contact the Department of Natural Resources and Renewables to inquire about what programs are in place to manage the deer population in Richmond County and report back to council.
Could I have a second on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed the recommendation from the in-camera session regarding the municipality of the County of Richmond's organizational chart. I move that council accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole to adjust the organizational chart as presented, including the position classifications.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, councillors. Any further, sorry, any further discussion on that modem?
Yeah, I just don't, after consideration, I don't feel I can justify it to the taxpayer this time, but...
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry. I didn't see you.
That's all right. Just because I'm not one of the Sampsons, I understand now that we're down the table, but the, I guess, you know, when feeling with councillor Brent Sampson, I, you know, I support the decision of the chart, and I support the decision of moving forward. I feel that that's something we all thrive on. I just, I guess upon discussion here tonight, I would have, I would have liked to have seen it wait until April 1st after our budget review.
Fair enough. Thank you, councillor Digdon and councillor Sampson for your comments on that. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion is carried.
This concludes the committee of the whole report for the month of October 2023, and I move its adoption.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillors. Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks, everyone. Before we move to bylaw and policy committee, though, I do believe we had an add-on motion that councillor Digdon was considering to refer our purchasing and tendering agreement or policy back to bylaw and policy committee. Okay, so, you'd like to make that motion?
I would like...
Okay.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor and councillors. So, the motion is on the floor to refer the policy back. Sorry, forgotten to press my button as well. So, the motion is on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. So, Deputy Warden, I would ask if you could potentially read our bylaw and policy committee report as well, if you have a copy of it there? Yeah?
Bylaw Policy Committee Report for October 10th, 2023. The committee met on October 11th, 2023. The committee discussed the travel and expense policy. I move that council accept the recommendation of the bylaw policy committee to proceed with the adoption of the amendments to the travel and expense policy.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden and councillor. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Right, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the grant disclosure policy. I move that council accept the recommendation of the bylaw policy committee to proceed with the adoption of the grant disclosure policy as presented.
All right, could I have a second on that motion, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden and councillor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
This concludes the bylaw policy committee report for October 10th, 2023. I move its adoption.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah, all right, so, the motion has been made to accept the report. Could I have a second on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the bylaw and policy committee report? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is carried. Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. Well done. It was a busy committee of the whole, so we kind of threw that out to you. All right, so the next item on our agenda, we have a couple of recommendations coming from, of course, the bylaw and policy, as you just heard. So, the travel and expense policy is now on our agenda, as anticipated. So, we are looking for a motion to formally accept the amendments to the travel and expense policy, to have them be adopted.
I'll make the motion to adopt the travel and expense policy as amended.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. The motion's been made to, that the amendments to the travel and expense policy be adopted. Could I have, is there any further discussion? Sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. So, the next item is the grant disclosure policy, also coming from our last committee report. So, we are looking for a motion to have the grant disclosure policy be adopted as a policy of the municipality of the County of Richmond.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Digdon. Second, please.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Oh, sorry, councillor Brent Sampson. I will get used to it. Yes, I know, I'm going to get the names mixed up. That's all right, the titles. So, okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the second reading regarding the marketing levy bylaw. And we did hear some additional information at a public hearing this evening, but we are looking at, we're looking at pushing, you know, putting forward, or approving second reading, excuse me, for the marketing levy bylaw with the amendments that had been discussed. So, I'll open that for a motion. Just looking for my wording here. Seems to be gone.
It is.
Thank you. So, the motion would be to approve second reading for the marketing levy bylaw with the amendment to item number eight, that the bylaw and marketing levy imposed hereby shall not apply to accommodations containing fewer than 10 rooms where the accommodation is provided or full payment for the accommodation is received on or before December 31st, 2023. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is regarding the wind turbine overlay mapping amendments to the Richmond County Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use bylaw. And again, this is a second reading approval that we're seeking. So, and we're looking for a motion to give second reading approval to the, for the wind turbine overlay mapping amendments to the Richmond County Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use bylaw. Thank you, councillor Sampson. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Shaun Sampson. Is there any further discussion on the second reading approval? All those in favor, please say aye.
No, that's all right. It's all right, I'm going to cover it on your little red button.
You're going to, sorry, councillor Digdon, I'm not doing that on purpose, I promise. Please press your button.
You vote one way different, and they shut you down the rest of the night. The, I guess I would just like to let everybody know, in case they're unaware, that we are looking at sending, this is going to the PAC committee for review, right? And then can be addressed or changed at any time moving forward? Okay.
Is there one at CAO?
Madam Chair. may be affected by this bylaw. Sorry, I thought I hit it.
Yeah, I did, I thought you did, too.
Maybe, maybe I knocked it off, but, sorry. So, we are looking to get feedback from folks, and we thank the folks at PAC for taking this on for us as well.
Great. Okay, thank you, CAO. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. So, the next item on the agenda is correspondence. We had none that required action, but we did have one piece of correspondence from the municipality of the District of Shelburne regarding a letter to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities related to improving cellphone service, cellphone coverage for emergency preparedness reasons, and certainly a topic that has been close to our heart here in Richmond County and discussed at our last meeting, certainly. So, I don't know if councillors had any comments on this. The letter is provided for information purposes, but if you'd like to speak to it, please do so. If not, we'll move on to the next item.
I was just going to say, I know it's been sent. If there was any way, we could add our voice to that. And I think, probably, I don't think you'd get much pushback from any municipalities within the province, because it seems to be an issue everybody's having. But, yeah, I was glad to see it anyway, and hopefully, if there is any way, we can add our name to that list, it'd be nice.
Certainly, I mean, I could offer to write, you know, a letter referencing their letter to NSFM and suggest that, you know, perhaps one of the roles of NSFM is, could be to collect some additional municipal voices, to provide to, you know, different levels of government and to service providers particularly.
Just thinking, maybe that's something at the upcoming fall conference, where you have people in the same room. They may be able to, that might be a good time, that it could be brought up there by somebody, and that way, get everybody on the same page, rather than one municipality heading to it.
Certainly, great suggestion, councillor Sampson. We can definitely do that. I plan to attend NSFM. I'm not sure if anybody else does, and can certainly put that on my agenda, topics to discuss, so. Okay, if there's no other conversation on that item? No, I'm just scribbling out my notes here as I accomplish them. It's like I keep a running to-do list, and it feels good when I check it off and scribble things out, right? Uh-huh, yeah. So, we had a piece of unfinished business. Next item on the agenda, it is regarding the Bredora Lake SEPI grant application for the Type 4 Regional Health General Grant Funds. And the request is, of course, for $10,000, as you'll note, from the application. Our CFO, our Director of Finance, has provided us with an update on grant amounts available. And we still have, I think, a total of...
Eleven thousand one ninety-five.
Yes, thank you. Somebody's not matching here. Eleven thousand one ninety-five. We have information from other municipalities and local governments. It looks like the contribution levels are ranging typically between $2,500 and $5,000. This is for the Two-Eyed Seeing Conference specifically, and the, I have to say, the response to this conference has been, has far exceeded the expectations of the planning committee, not just in terms of attendees. I believe there might, you know, we're probably going to have to cut registration off, and that's being held at the Membership Trade and Convention Centre, so that's a couple hundred people, you know, it's a good-sized facility. But also, in terms of the number of people who are interested in making presentations during the conference, we did a call for proposals for presentations, and I think we'd have to have a seven-day conference in order to fit them all in, but there's such a high level of interest of people wanting to demonstrate the practice of two-eyed seeing and how they're applying it in their workplaces and learning places, and it's interesting to see how far that concept, coming from right here in Unimoggi, has, you know, worked its way all across Canada and North America even, so. But, that being said, there is a request for grant funds towards the conference, and I would open for discussion from councillors as to what you may or may not be comfortable with, or if we should be considering the request, period. So, maybe I'll just open for comments then. Councillor Digdon?
Shut it off there. The, yeah, I mean, looking through the rest of the counties, I guess, that are on par with them, and we've been supporting them all along, so, you know, I don't think we want to start at the bottom of the barrel. I don't necessarily know that we want to go to the top, but, you know, I'm comfortable, I feel comfortable at the $5,000 mark. I don't know about everybody else, but...
From the regional funds? Okay. Okay, councillor Shaun Sampson, maybe I'll just go around the room, since we started in that direction. You just press your button there, if you don't mind, yeah?
Yeah, no, for me, I'm in total support of this conference, and I'd be in tune with the 5,000. I would be willing to share some of my district fund to the tune of maybe $500, or my district fund, I don't know about everybody else, but, yeah, I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, councillor Shaun Sampson, thank you. Councillor Melanie Sampson, or sorry, Deputy Warden, I will get used to that after a while.
You can say Deputy Warden Sampson.
Okay, okay, that's right.
Okay, so we did receive information earlier today in terms of other municipalities and what they've committed. I've also looked at the SEPI financial budget, and so, in that budget, under Cape Breton Municipalities, they specifically say that they were budgeting $12,500. I just want to make sure I have my numbers right in my head. Then they say they've received $7,500. Should we assume that that $7,500 would include the two that were identified today in the email, and then another?
I think, sorry, I think you're looking at the SEPI budget, correct? Not the conference, right? So the conference has a separate budget line. The SEPI budget is the monies that we provide as municipalities for the operational funding for SEPI each year. And in fact, Richmond County, I don't think, has paid out our portion yet, but I think it's coming, it's forthcoming very soon. Yes, so that's the difference there.
So did I miss it, or did they not include their budget for the conference?
Hold on, I might have missed it.
I saw there was two documents there. We should probably turn me off.
I believe both budgets were included. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so now I have a different question. Okay, now that I understand what I'm looking at, okay, but that's what their expenses are, but typically, a budget would say where they think that the funds will come from. When I look at their grant application, their grant application has money coming from different funding sources. Again, should I assume that that's funding sources for the conference or for the organization? Because if I add these numbers together, that's $3,950, and then if I look at their conference budget, it's, of expenses, it's $3,980, which leaves no, for lack of a better requirement for something in between.
Yes, so the grant application is specific to the conference. The SEPI operational budget was just provided as reference, and so it would be comparing the conference budget to the grant application, and you'll see that's where the financing on the grant application come in, right? So the reality is, is that the funds from MIGMA, from MK, I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce it, and I won't do it justice, is they have not been confirmed, and in fact, we have learned that the federal government hasn't signed off the agreement yet to allow MK to disperse these funds. So the likelihood is, is that they are not going to land now. So that's why they're looking at trying to make up the shortfall, and they've had tremendous response from the community and from the business community to make that up, and also have, of course, begun to trim expenses, right, to look at what can be eliminated. The original registration fees, so this was the original budget, but I can tell you that because of the high level of interest, you know, we know that the registration fees are going to generate, you know, I won't say it could be twice that, but it will be well in excess of the $85,000. So we're confident that the conference can still happen in a sustainable manner, but the original financing that we had planned for didn't pan out as such. I do anticipate that there will be federal contribution, it just probably will not come through that particular program, which is the Indigenous learning component.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Okay, so certainly with only $11,000 left in our Type IV, I wouldn't support a full $10,000 as per their request. I would, like, I just want to confirm, Deputy Warden, when you say you'd give 500 from your district fund, you're still saying that the grand total would be 5,000, but now, based on this conversation right now, 4,500 would come from, and 500 from your district. Okay, so I would also give 500 from my district so that we can leave some more money in that Type IV fund as well. So again, I would see a max of five, which, with the Deputy Warden and myself putting in 1,000, that will leave us at four, and then if others can do something similar. But regardless of that, I would still support that level of sponsorship, because I do think it's a very important conference, and I would definitely, especially hearing that they may not get all of the funds that they were hoping for from MK, I want to make sure that they have what they need to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sampson. Deputy, or sorry, Councilor Brent.
Yeah, my only concern would be just where we're only a little more than halfway through our fiscal year, and we'd be, yeah, we'd be running fairly low on the Type IV, the general fund. I was thinking more in the line of 2,500, only because seeing like Inverness's contribution and so on, but, yeah, I can support the 5,000 if that's the will of council.
Okay, thank you, folks. So it sounds like we have general agreement on an amount of $5,000, and it's just in terms of how we get there. So, I mean, I would certainly be supportive of putting 500 in from my district funds as well to relieve the pressure on the regional fund, because to your point, Councilor Sampson, there's still months left in the fiscal year here, so, Deputy Warden, or sorry, Councilor Digdon?
Soon as she thinks she's getting money, she points right over to me. Look at her, look at her go. The, I as well would also contribute to 500 from my district fund, and.
Okay, thank you. So do we have general consensus on the 500 from district funds? I wasn't, sorry, Councilor, no, okay. All right, so we had 500 from district funds, one, two, three, and four, and 3,000 from the regional fund. So we would need a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Digdon. Could I have a seconder, please?
I don't know, I'm lit up.
Okay. The first one to lie on is the second motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Right, that motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. So the next item on the agenda is the action item list. So we have the list of action items. This is for review. Does anybody have any questions on any of those items? Okay, so hearing none, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. So this piece is related to the CERNGAR legislation, Bill 340. So, you know, apologies for a late-in-the-evening Friday email regarding the service negotiation, service exchange agreement, negotiation, but this was information that came to my attention late in the afternoon on Friday. Essentially, as I noted in the memo, so Bill 340 is on the floor of the legislature now. It has passed first reading. It is currently being debated at second reading in the provincial legislature. I believe there is some filibustering going on at this stage of the game. There is a very vocal group who is, you know, I guess, not in favor of the bill. Certainly, if you've read the news, all Nova Scotia, particularly CBRM, has some, you know, objections to it. It does have the potential to significantly impact municipalities. We've discussed it here before in the original proposal after the consultation, and we'll say this work has been going on a couple of years now, so there's a lot of work that's been put in. But many rural municipalities, including Richmond, we talked about it here, we were really concerned about the potential inclusion of a program for upgrades to roads, where the result would be the transfer of ownership of that road, and those would be for G, H, I, and J-class roads, under this kind of Stream B of the roads proposal. We've met with the MLA to express our concerns. The committee then recommended that the road proposal, Stream B, be moved to Schedule A, and Schedule A is simply the schedule where they moved everything that had to be parked and couldn't be dealt with in this current legislative sitting. The government has, in the meantime, tabled Bill 340. It does not include the details on what will and will not be included in the service exchange. What it includes is a framework that creates a path to get us to service exchange renegotiation through regulation instead of legislation. So what had happened in the past is that municipalities would want a change to some piece of the service exchange agreement. It would be very difficult to get on the legislative agenda, which would delay, 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 and so this, creating this framework to move it from legislation to regulation means that we wouldn't have those kinds of delays. And at the end of the day, you know, if the provincial government, if particularly in a majority situation, decides they want to change the service exchange agreement, they have the power to do so, whether it's legislative or regulation, because they control the legislative agenda. However, for municipalities, moving it to regulation sort of presents it as a little bit of a win for us, or is a little bit easier for us to make changes, because we, you know, we don't need to wait to get on the legislative agenda. So that was, you know, this is how, you know, the bill ended up being formed, is that it really just creates the framework. You know, I think, you know, based on what's been happening in the province and the relationship between the provincial government and municipalities, we probably want to be really careful in, you know, in terms of whether or not we express support. Specifically, you know, I'm very concerned that, you know, as I learned more about the process and where it's at in second reading so far, there is a potential that the bill may not pass if we don't, if the people who support it do not express that support, because right now, the people who do not support it are expressing that lack of support vigorously, and I don't blame them. They have, I'm probably sure, very good reasons for doing so. So my suggestion with adding this item to the agenda is to write a letter of support for Bill 340 with clear restrictions, that we support this as a path to achieve specifically what was consulted on with the membership, and specifically that the Road Stream B proposal regarding transfer of ownership of roads would be moved to Schedule A and not be part of this agreement. So since I wrote this letter, we've since received a piece of correspondence from Minister Lorr, kind of outlining that piece as well, and, you know, and kind of giving a more description as to where this is at in the provincial agenda right now. So at this stage of the game, I am, I guess I'm seeking the, you know, to understand the will of council, if you would like to write a letter of support for Bill 340 or not, and then we will act accordingly. So I'll open for discussion at this stage, if anybody has any questions or comments.
I guess, one of the questions I have, and I don't know, I was on the, I was on the meeting, I guess, with the Minister Lorr, as well as many others, I'm sure, around the table, but the, one of the questions that was unanswered was, I guess, bridge maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, where would it fall in there, because, again, you know, the county may be able to take over roads, but you definitely can't take over the cost of bridge repair. As much as we probably can't take over the cost of roads, but we definitely can't take over the cost of bridge repair. So, again, you know, it's, before, I guess, I would, before I would, I guess, vote to send a letter of support for Bill 340, I would kind of want to see the breakdown of.
So that's exactly the point, Councilor Digdon, is you're not going to see that breakdown in the legislation. What the legislation creates is the pathway to deal with these items through regulation. So that's why I'm saying, if we provide a letter of support, we do need to be very specific that the roads, including bridges, would, you know, the letter of support is that we support this bill based on the consultations and the recommendation that that piece, the roads and bridges, would be moved to Schedule A and not become part of this current negotiation, because more work needs to be done. The devil will absolutely be in the details. We cannot afford to take on roads and bridges. Yeah, 100%. So that's, I guess, the only way in which I would suggest, as a municipality, we might be comfortable in issuing the letter of support, because I don't think we want all of the good work that's happened on housing and corrections. I mean, there's substantial savings for us there, right? We don't want that work to be all for nothing and have all that piece be thrown out because the bill didn't pass, but the only way I would be comfortable in writing a letter of support would be if we specify that that roads piece is moved off the table. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, so Madam Morton, I, yeah, I would support the letter of support with, like you say, our concerns and make sure we specify those concerns, but I do have a breakdown of what it means for Richmond County, and as you mentioned, Warden, I forget, housing and corrections, we're looking at the savings. I mean, when you look at this document, it has the word absorb and leverage. It's hard to ignore those two words when it comes to, you know, running our municipality, right? So, I mean, you're looking at the savings there of those two corrections and housing, you're looking at savings of $440,000, right? So that's hard to ignore for sure, right? So I would, I would be in favor of a letter of support, yeah.
Thank you, Councilor.
My only concern is just that it's oftentimes with these type of situations, if there's going to be give, there's going to be take, and we're definitely not getting the full story here, because to remove the road part of it that easily, and then we're just going to get all the goodies and none of the bad parts, I struggle to believe that's going to be the outcome in the end. But, I mean, I'm fine with supporting it, given what you're saying with those caveats, that these road issues and bridge issues not be part of it, because there's no way we can absorb those costs.
Those costs would quickly negate any savings that we would make on the housing and correction size in the first 20 minutes. Well said. Yeah, Councilor Melanie?
I would just, I would concur with that. Those would be my comments as well, like, we need to have that part about the roads and bridges in there, but I'm concerned because everybody's trying to balance something, so.
Okay, well, that being said, then, could I have a motion that I would draft a letter on behalf of Richmond Municipal Council with clear restrictions, that council supports the Bill 340 as a path to achieve what was consulted on with the membership, specifically, and when I say the membership, it's the NSFM membership that we're talking about there, specifically that the Roads Stream Bs proposal regarding transfer of ownership of roads to municipalities be moved to Schedule A for further discussion.
Madam Morton, just to clarify, when you read the last, did you say Stream B or Stream A and Stream V?
Just Stream B was the, Stream B was the only one that resulted in transfer of road ownership. Stream A dealt with roadways in towns, which the towns have expressed support for.
I'll be willing to make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Digdon. Could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thank you, folks. We'll get that done right away and see where it lands. All right, the next item on the agenda is the question period. So this question period is restricted to items on the remainder of the agenda following the committee reports, and for folks who would like to call in, the phone number to call is 902-226-9885. And of course, folks, if you have members of the gallery who would like to ask a question, you're welcome to do so. I do not see a microphone on that end.
We'll have to get them to use this.
Oh, okay.
That was the one that got removed earlier tonight. It was causing problems.
Okay, so we had a technical problem, so we've got a mic here, so instead of coming to the front, you can come to this one and just press the red button when you're ready to speak, and that way, your voice will be projected to the folks who are viewing online or from home later on.
Wes, would you like me to hand that out while you're talking? Sure.
Okay, and, yeah, and just press your red button when you're ready, and just let us know your name, okay? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, council members. Madam Chair. My name is Wesley Martin. I live at 1447 Janvren Harbor Road in West Arashat, and my subject tonight to ask a question is a set of proposed amendments to the county bylaws that received their first reading at a council hearing on October 25th. And I'm here tonight because the September 25th public hearing agenda did not include the 10 pages of substantive staff report that would have permitted interested residents to respond to the details of the proposed bylaw. So I find it necessary to ask questions at this late date. I was at that public hearing. Question one, and I apologize for the detail and the small print, I can barely read it myself. This is compounding my misery.
Hold that piece back. It'll be okay, but good luck.
Oh, man, here we go. Sorry, my eyes have been fading all day. So question one is a long one, unfortunately. Since industrial-scale wind turbine development is now focused on Geisborough County, and since Richmond County is no longer under pressure to revise its bylaws to accommodate a specific proposed development, is proposed development, is it the council's intention to subject the proposed amendments to a review by Eastern District Planning Commission and the Richmond County Planning Advisory Committee that would permit and encourage public input that is comparable to that received by the corresponding bylaws of Inverness County at the hands of the Eastern District Planning Commission?
Okay, so if that's okay with you, we'll address that question?
Certainly.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. So, point taken on the staff report from EDPC not being included with our PAC agendas, that's no problem for us to do, and we should be doing that. So we will do that going forward, I think we can make that happen. They put them on their website, but we don't link them from our agenda to our, so we need to make that link, because although it's out there and technically public, it's, we shouldn't be making people dig for that, right? So that's a great point, and I think something that we can do, and maybe, I think, if we address that in our comms plan, because we do talk about whole packages being public, okay, perfect. So that's going to hit on a couple of points for us there, so thank you for that. And in terms of the, so the process of Inverness County, I'll admit, I'm less familiar with that, I know you have some information about that, but certainly, making this, or putting a presentation together for Planning Advisory Committee, that's exactly what the point would be, is that that committee would hear and consider the points you're making and take that into account kind of going forward, right? And certainly, the chair of that committee is here, Counselor Brent Sampson, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, just so everybody's clear, I don't know that, at least PAC, we never felt we were under any pressure to develop anything. It was meant as a, to be done preemptively so that it was done when we weren't under pressure. That was kind of the thought going forward, that we could do this now while we had the time, and we weren't, you know, rather than somebody coming and looking to rezone for a specific site, it was trying to make it easier going forward that we had these plans in place prior to somebody asking, yeah.
Does that answer your question?
That's a good and very generous answer.
Okay.
My reason for having questions and wanting to have made a presentation and originally made an appointment to present tonight...
Yes.
Was, was that I think that the draft ordinance is incomplete in itself, and it's dramatically incomplete, in my view, in comparison to Inverness County's proposed divisions at the hands of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And so I think that...
Oh, I'll just ask you to hit your button, sorry.
I'm sorry. I was counting on my, speaking loudly. And so I do think that your response about working preemptively is entirely reasonable. I just think that as this draft now stands, it's incomplete, and being preemptive incompletely is probably not the best strategy, and I appreciate the opportunity to come to the PAC tomorrow.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, do you have another question?
Two more questions.
Oh, sorry.
Clear, I don't think it would be on the agenda for PAC tomorrow, because we're pretty full, so we're probably talking... There is one tomorrow, I just don't know that there would be any time for that tomorrow. So unless, we may end up having to schedule a separate meeting if need be. Well, depending what's on the agenda for November, but I mean, if we have to schedule another one, we can schedule another one. We're not locked into one a month, like, but it's just that I know with what's on the agenda for tomorrow night, I don't think we'd have time to get into that for sure.
Boy, I hope it's not inappropriate. I'm going to be out of the country getting health care, friend, my wife is getting health care for almost all of the month of Thanksgiving of November, and so if the meeting were down the road, December or later, the PAC I'd be able to attend, and I would be grateful if I could participate.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask if you leave that for him to coordinate with the chair and the clerk on the PAC, we'd be more than happy to take care and accommodate when you're available.
I get to say that I'm deeply grateful. Whoops, I'm sorry. And break the chair. Question two. Is it the council's intention to permit and encourage reconsideration of and possible increases to the one-thousand-meter residential setbacks that appear in the draft bylaw?
So I can kind of, I guess I can come back with a general answer on that, is that any of the terms of the bylaw, if we hear from the public, you know, about concerns, just like, just like we heard, we've heard over the last number of, you know, of weeks about procurement and the disclosure of our grants, and, you know, putting that into policy, I think anything is on the table for reconsideration. Bylaws, you know, exist to give us guidelines and rules to, the rules to live by, but they're changeable, and there's a process for changing them. So certainly, that is one of the things that we could consider changing, it's one of any number of things we could consider changing going forward.
Thank you. I would like to strike the third question, because it's not necessary.
Okay.
I did not know what I'd be facing when I came here tonight, and it is, it's wholly unnecessary. You've been very receptive, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming in, I really appreciate it, all right. And safe travels, yes, absolutely. Okay, so are there any other questions from the gallery? Or from the telephone line? Okay, so hearing none, that brings us, my gosh, are we at the end? Because we don't have an in-camera? All right, so there being no further business, we'll consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, and thanks to those watching at home as well.